Welcome to the September tenth, two thousand and nineteen city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Protem Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Vucuro?
Here.
Please stand. For a moment of silence, for eighteen years ago, two thousand and one, nine eleven, we all remember that day. The loved ones, the family members that were in the tragic event, firefighters, first responders, police officers, the medical teams, I think we should stand proud and give them a moment of silence. Thank you. Pastor Stanley, would you please?
Hello, everyone. Let's take this moment, bow our heads for prayer. Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we lift our voice to you in the name of Jesus with thanksgiving in our hearts, that your hand, your will, your power is on our city. We pray that wisdom and clarity rest in the heart of the administration and council, and then your hand of safety and protection is over our city in every area, especially first responders, family and children, even in our school systems. Thank you for this meeting time together tonight. We'll accomplish things to continue to have us be the peaceful, growing city that you desire. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eighteen years ago, I believe, a moment in time stood still for those innocent folks. But our country stood proud and moved forward towards to make a right out of the wrong. And today, eighteen years later, we are still standing proud, I feel, even though we may disagree, but we need to agree to disagree on all issues. And make amends to all and everyone we know, because you never know how long you have to talk to that person. And that's all I'm going to say for this evening. Well, council, approve of the revised agenda, please.
Move approval of the revised agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Any dissension, discussion? We have an agenda. Special presentation, National Recovery Month. Mr. Klobuchar, would you do the honors on that one for me, please?
Yeah, I can do that.
I'll take the next one. My eyes are not, my glasses aren't.
I have my glasses, I'll do it.
I can read it, just, uh...
National Recovery Month, September two thousand and nineteen. Whereas substance use recovery is important for individual well-being and vitality, as well as for families, communities, and businesses. And whereas, an estimated two point one million people have had an opioid use disorder, which includes one point seven million people with a prescription pain reliever use disorder, and point seven million people with a heroin use disorder. And whereas, according to SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, in two thousand and seventeen, an estimated twenty point seven million people aged twelve or older needed substance abuse treatment. And whereas, we will continue to educate and raise awareness of the risk and potential harm associated with prescription drug misuse. And whereas, we believe everyone facing substance use disorders deserve the benefit of recovery. And whereas, Friday, September twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, has been designated for Oakland County's Twelfth Annual Substance Use Recovery Celebration and Walk. And whereas, stigma and stereotypes associated with substance use disorders often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve the quality, their quality of life, pardon me. And whereas, substance use disorders occur when the recurrent use of alcohol and/or drugs causes clinically or functionally significant impairment, such as health problems, disability, and failure to meet major responsibilities at work, school, or home. And whereas, substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of their choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential. And whereas, substance use disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, and also enriches the culture of our community. And now therefore be resolved that Oakland County Community Health Network hereby recognize September two thousand and nineteen as National Recovery Month. OCHN calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools, to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of substance abuse, and the need for appropriate and accessible services to promote recovery.
Thank you.
You may wish to proclaim that, sir.
Make a proclamation that National Recovery Month is September of two thousand and nineteen. Another proclamation honoring the Skurbeck Family Carnival. Whereas the Skurbeck Family Carnival, the entertainment provider of the Hazel Park Memorial Weekend Festival at Greenacres Park, has been partnering alongside the city for several years. And whereas, Skurbeck Family Carnival has been providing the highest quality of entertainment as the carnival for the Hazel Park Memorial Weekend Festival, offering a variety of fair foods and attractions, helping to deliver this successful annual event. And whereas, the Skurbeck Family Carnival has provided a family-like feeling for not just the city, but for all who attend the weekend festival, creating memories, and generations of residents have been able to share and enjoy for years. And whereas, the Skurbeck Family Carnival for the two thousand and nineteen Hazel Park Memorial Festival has generously donated a corporous, cooperous amount of plush carnival toys that will be distributed to Hazel Park residents through the Hazel Park Fire Department during the upcoming winter holidays. So therefore, be resolved that Hazel Park City Council hereby honors the Skurbeck Family Carnival for their donation to the youth of Hazel Park. We extend our best wishes to them and look forward to working with them in the future.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite Screen Papakian and representatives of the Skurbeck family to the podium, please.
Hi, my name's Bob Skurbeck, this is my sister, Carly. We've been coming here ten years, and it's been a truly a great partnership. We're, we're a couple of kids that were raised in the Upper Peninsula, so coming to a big city can be intimidating. Everybody's been more than welcoming from the people we work with for the festival, and then, I guess, our customers that come to the park and make it such a successful event. And, uh, so I can't thank you and your, your city and all the participants enough, so it's, and I feel very blessed to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, the Skurbeck Family Carnival has been very, um, a great partner throughout the years, and it's been great working with both of you. And, um, we're very grateful for their generous donation of, um, large stuffed animals, which will be distributed only to Hazel Park kids, so it's really awesome, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Mayor, I will say we've had some of the most successful memorial days in his, but we have had the most successful memorial days in history with the Skurbeck Family Carnival. They're great to work with, and we look forward to working with Skurbeck Carnivals in the future. It's been a great partnership.
I'll make the proclamation that the Skurbeck Family Carnival of two thousand and nineteen. And thank you for the donation, once again. It takes down civic announcements. I see we have our county commissioner, Helene Zach, here. Is there any other officials here that would like to come up after Helene?
Good evening, Helene Zach, your county commissioner. I've been very busy, busy lately, so most of you know we do have a new Oakland County exec, former mayor Dave Coulter. I'm thrilled to have him. He gets our issues on this end of town, shares many of the values that I do to champion, so I'm very thrilled about that. I'm really busy trying to get the budget passed from my end. This is the most important thing that we do. We have to pass a budget by the end of September. You know, we have a new county exec, we have different, you know, team members. It's an interesting journey, but we will get it done. A couple other things, we have the women, we have a, a committee through the Board of Commissioners on the Women's Suffrage Ad Hoc Committee. They are doing an event in conjunction with the Patriot Week Foundation. They'll host a free event on Saturday, September twenty eighth, from one to three P. M. at the Hoffman Farms Winery, which is located at two five two one Rose Center Road in Highland, the other end of the county. This event will feature hayrides, pony rides, and more, and this is, you know, to celebrate Pa- Patriot Week Foundation. It's an annual event that runs around this time. And if you want more details, you can go to www.oakgov.com/votesforwomen. There's also a "I voted" sticker contest going on, and this is an opportunity, again in conjunction with the Women's Suffrage Ad Hoc Committee, in partnership with Oakland County Register of Deeds Lisa Brown. And it is a design contest for the sticker when you vote, say, you know, "I voted." And so, um, students in grades six to eight, and students from grades nine to twelve can win a thousand dollar, um, I, I guess, a dona- a donation from Cornerstone, Cornerstone Community Financial Credit Union. And to find out, these designs have to be submitted online no later than Friday, October eighteenth. And for more information, you go to the same place, oakgov/votesforwomen, and there are details about what you need to do. And that's it for this evening. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, wait, I do have one more thing to talk about on the budget. Hopefully, one of the amendments for our city manager, our city, is that we are trying to add in two million dollars for the local road improvement program.
Well, good, I look at that.
For the next calendar year.
Even better.
And I know that you asked for it, it's been approved by our county exec, we just need to get, you know, enough votes on that, so...
Well, hopefully, we can get those votes, and if I can be of any assistance twisting arms, I'll be happy to, uh...
Well, I, thank you for your offer, but that was our number one ask of what we wanted to add.
That was a really good thing to ask for.
Um, we all, you know, I agree. But, you know, that's for this year, and then we're going to have to work on funding for future years coming up, so...
Helene, thank you. This, this is an exciting year. Your, your last year as our county exec, your last term, you're going out with a bang, and it's really...
Oh, I am.
I, Dave was an awesome commissioner, and it's exciting to see the energy and, and just, uh, you know, blowing the dust out of some of the corners of Oakland County. It's, it's lovely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone for any other civic announcements that would like to come up?
Hi, everyone. Jared Gage, I was Hazel Park Community Coalition. I actually have three things, and recognizing National Recovery Month, fun fact, in Oakland County, um, from two thousand and seventeen to now, we've actually reduced opiate overdoses by twenty-eight percent countywide, so it's something to be very proud of. This is a countywide effort through groups like coalitions and schools, Narcan trainings, groups like the Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities, Oakland County Health Network, um, so a wonderful thing to look forward to. In addition to that, foreign election, which can reverse an opiate overdose, there is a free business election training next Tuesday, September seventeenth. Um, it's from eight to nine thirty A. M. at Lamford Administration Building. It's hosted by Madison Heights Community Coalition and Hazel Park Community Coalition. Um, it's free to anyone, it's mostly for businesses, but anyone can come. Please RSVP if you can. The number to RSVP is two four eight, two two one, seven one oh one, and there is a free continental breakfast. And then additionally, in order, uh, September is not only National Recovery Month, but it's also National Suicide Awareness Month. Um, so the coalition is currently recognizing that at our school district. Uh, today is National Suicide Awareness Day, this week is National Suicide Awareness Week. Um, so we've been passing out little ribbons for everyone to, uh, wear. It's really nice to pass those out, see the students really engaged. Um, as we know, youth have high suicide rates. Um, it's something that's very sad, but we want to make sure that we're breaking the stigma, we're continuing to break the stigma. Um, so if you would like one of these ribbons and support a National Suicide Awareness Month, come see me, and we have them at our high school at the, um, in our office there, you can just reach out to one of us here. If you want to reach me here, my number is two four eight, five four six, four zero six zero. Thank you, guys. We're looking forward to working with you guys more.
Appreciate it, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
Any other civic announcements for the audience? Any civic announcements from the city council?
Yes, your honor. Uh, Friday the thirteenth, lovely day for an event, uh, this Friday at the Hazel Park High School, we have the Hometown Huddle. I believe this is the fifth time we've had this, fifth time I've been there, anyway, and it's going to run from five o'clock to six thirty. This is part of the community engagement team that was started years back to bring different groups from the community together, be it faith-based, volunteer groups, civic groups, uh, different groups throughout the city. It, it is a community engagement team. There's going to be lots of free activities, free giveaways, free things, it's going to be a blast. Um, the team that is playing us is the Marine City, I believe it's the Mariners, and they have a pretty rabid fan base, so we're expecting about five hundred of their supporters to inundate Hazel Park, and they will be tailgating, I understand. So it'd be great if everybody from the community could come out and support our Vikings and get a chance, you know, maybe you're not involved in any groups here, um, this is your opportunity to meet all of the current groups that are out there and talk to them one-on-one and find out what they're doing in the city. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements? We'll close civic announcements, public discussion. Anyone from the audience have any public discussion? I have two that's signed up. Mary Ann Masachowski?
Uh, good evening, my name is Mary Ann Massachuk. I'm also with the Hazel Park Lions, and I'm here today to welcome everybody to come and join our group. We're signing up for membership. Uh, we need volunteers, we need help, and if you can't join, just help us out at one event, or we've got wonderful events coming up, uh, so, uh, and then on the second thing I'm here is for to update the cable. Uh, the events were past la- uh, Memorial Day now, yes, I've watched it ten times, and to update the visual, because I have people that, uh, do not have, uh, the capability, but they have the TV. So I, this is a way of me staying in touch with them when we have our wonderful events that'll be coming up with the Lions, uh, to be informed, okay? And, uh, and that's it, and thank you, y'all do a really good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann. Jesse Robertson?
Jesse Robertson, uh, two three five three Hoover Avenue. Good evening, mayor and council. I come before you to, let me, just this, I come before you tonight to speak in defense of my hometown of Hazel Park. This is in response to the number of things that I've heard said, both by fellow residents and some non-residents alike. While here at these city council meetings, I generally hear a lot of good things, not every word that I hear overall spoken about Hazel Park's been positive, especially those uttered outside this room. Some of them I have heard in person, and others have been relayed to me by others. Given what I have been told, I for one am thankful that I largely avoid social media. When it comes to the subject of the city, it appears that social media is all too full of mean nasty things. Not just drama that is probably personal in nature, but even verbal attacks on many of the institutions and fixtures of our very city. Yes, Hazel Park does have some problems. Every city has problems. The important thing to keep in mind, however, is that here in Hazel Park, we have hundreds of individuals constantly working to improve things, and it is because of all these citizens working that we can often say that great things are happening in Hazel Park. And this process isn't stopping. I am certain that Mayor Webb, and especially city manager, Mr. Klobuchar, can attest that the job of making Hazel Park ever greater than before is a never-ending one. This does raise an important question to me. There are many who are contributing our, their time and efforts to improve the city we call home. For those that are complaining and saying vile things about our city, where are they? While employees and volunteers alike for the city are building brand-new parks and putting on amazing events like our Memorial Day Festival and the Hazel Park Art Fair, why are there people taking to Facebook, Twitter, and elsewhere to besmirch the city when they could lend a hand instead? I would very much like to see more of the residents of this great city turn out and become a part of solution, rather than bemoaning problems that may or may not even exist. And in spirit of this, I thank every single one of you who are already here and doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come up for public discussion? Seeing no one, close public discussion. Rule of the consent agenda is in order, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent agenda items one through ten.
I support with discussion.
We have support with discussion. Mayor Protem?
Uh, I have a question on number, well, I guess not a question, but a request for number seven. So we should be getting a list of potential NEZs, um, for October. I was wondering if we could make sure that that includes, um, a financial analysis?
Yeah, well, together, I, hopefully that it'll be done by October, but I'm not, do we have a timeframe on that, Jeff? They've been saying October, yeah.
When, when we receive it, I would just like to request that we receive it with a financial analysis.
Absolutely.
I think we need to sit down.
Yeah, we may need a study session on this before we pull the trigger. This is, this is a big issue. We're just laying...
We put it on the agenda for the next meeting as well.
Right. We're, we're just laying the groundwork for this right now by doing the intent to hold the public hearing. There's a lot of work that needs to be done.
And we have a little bit of a works, a little discussion on this.
Yes, absolutely, you're going to have to. You may need a whole...
I'll hopefully next week.
I know this is an issue that you've been working on, I know Mayor Protem, Amy Aubrey's familiar with this from her service with the city of Detroit, and she was researching , uh, last week as well. Uh, this is not, this is, it, there's more to it than just a quick asset, so, uh, we've got to go into this with our eyes open, and there's a lot of potential ramifications, so yeah, we definitely...
And it doesn't fit all the criterias on everybody, Will.
Yeah, everybody thinks this maybe is something that it isn't, and what it is, is something that is focused and, uh, created in different areas, and, uh, again, you both can speak on it because you've researched it, Jeff Campbell can speak on it, but we're going to need to have a study session on it.
Great, thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
I have discussion or question on item five. I did make a point that when this originally came out in the packet, it didn't have the parcel address, and I, I was familiar with a lot when you gave the description, is, does this have a clean title on it? Because I remember there was somebody not too long ago that approached me, they were having trouble, they wanted to buy it, and, uh, there was some kind of a lien or something on it.
Well, if it goes through tax foreclosure, that will extinguish everything.
That, so, no, it...
So there will be a clean title.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on one through ten? Anyone? Any dissension on one through ten? Let me pass the consent agenda, no administrative reports, no boards commissioners, time, new business, nah, anybody have any new business?
Mr. Mayor, I have some new business. Uh, first of all, I wanted to inform the city council that the Recreation Board tonight passed a series of rules at, uh, regard, for regarding the Scout Park play area. Uh, I will provide you guys a copy of those rules, uh, in your LL packet. I can read them into the record if you'd like, but they're pretty basic. Uh, we're going to have a sign posted for that, uh, as soon as the sign comes in. Uh, Police Department's been doing a very good job, uh, of policing the situation, I think that things have calmed down there, and, uh, I view this, again, as a very positive development there. So I want to thank our Police Department for their hard work with this. You'll also be receiving tonight, before you leave, a copy of a draft, very draft, recreational cannabis ordinance that Melissa Schwartz and Jeff Campbell and our consultants have been working very hard on to get you in a timely manner, again, like the, uh, you know, uh, the other issue here, these are, does it require a substantial amount of, uh, work and undertaking, and this is just the beginning of the process. So you'll have that, you will walk out of here with that tonight as well. Uh, I also need to update you on North John R. Construction. Uh, Tom Jones is here, he can speak, uh, at length on it if you wish, but in a nutshell, we will be doing, uh, John R. Construction this year, North John R., from Chestnut to Ten Mile, the other section, because of its close proximity to the work, uh, being done on Nine Mile, we're going to put that section of John R. off until the first part of construction season next year.
Okay, Scout Park, since you brought up. We had a couple of complaints about the, uh, security issues there with the security officer that was there, has that been corrected?
That has been corrected.
Your honor, I have something as well.
Go ahead, then you're next.
I know some of the comments online, probably that Jesse is referring to, pertain to Scout Park. Um, I know we've been getting a lot of complaints about teenagers using the park. Um, I just want to remind, uh, parents, um, I know we also had an issue with some, actually some teenagers by my house, uh, breaking light bulbs at a construction site. Uh, we have a BMX park, uh, that is a great outlet for teenagers with bikes. I believe it's at Woodward Heights in Melville.
Yes, Flure Park.
So, um, I think if we can maybe highlight that, remind parents that this is a great option, uh, for teenagers that aren't allowed to use the structures at Scout Park. We do still have some parks available to our teenagers, um, that they can go there and, and they can do the jumps and, and everything at the BMX park. Um, so we're not just saying you can't do this, let's also offer them an alternative and a solution.
And, uh, to follow up on that, uh, badam Mayor Protem and other members of council, uh, I have been in discussions with the foundation about the potential for some equipment and some facilities that would be designed more for teenagers and adults. Again, I think that it's important that everybody show that they can behave right now with the, uh, facilities that we have here, so that we can convince the foundation to give us some more money to do something, uh, even, you know, even just as big, uh, in the future in the next year or two. So we are in those discussions, and, uh, they're excited, they're receptive to what we're talking about. And, uh, again, I want to make sure that we treat this, this beautiful facility that they've given us, that the community came together to build, that everybody treats this right, so it can be a good example of how, well Hazel Park can behave. And again, the, the equipment is designed for children twelve and under. That sign came right with the equipment, so...
Councilman?
Thank you, your honor. Just prior to coming in here, I was given a letter from one of my neighbors, and it's been passed off to city manager Klobuchar, who then passed it off to Tim regarding a teardown, and, uh, there's some issues with it, where there's a sinkhole, and they don't believe that the sewer was capped off properly. So Tim, I want to thank you for, for getting on this, and as I requested, you might want to look at other properties that this contractor handled. I've had complaints about two other lots on Milton, one of them is oozing some stuff, and I'll get you the address on that. Also, thank you for coming out, and Tom, for relaying the information to Tim that we have a sinkhole along Ford Road, and, uh, we have a lovely orange barrel right now, and I know you guys are in the process of taking care of it, but thank you.
Anyone else? Any more new business from anyone? All right, we'll close new business. Communications from department heads, anyone, any of the department heads would like to have anything to say this evening? Or do I go targeting? You got it. Just to secure the, you know, figurehead of all department heads here.
Right. Had some break-ins to cars, uh...
Had some break-ins to cars over the weekend, the last few days. Some tools. One was a gun. So don't leave guns or items that you care about in your vehicles. One thing that they all had in common, every victim's vehicle was unlocked. So unlock your, or lock your cars. And keep your valuables inside, take them out with you. Laptops, that kind of thing. If you are somebody that has a business where you use tools, definitely you want to lock your van.
It's not your fault, Chief.
What's that?
Kind of your fault. You made us feel safe here. We can, don't, we want to leave our car doors unlocked.
All right.
I appreciate that with the low, with the low percentages of crime that we have in our community, I think it's great.
Yeah, well, and that's part of crimes of opportunity.
But yes, you need to take responsibility to lock your doors. Yes, I'm just having a little-
I know. But help us out and lock your cars, so don't give people the opportunity. Next thing is, it seems like one of the biggest complaints, it's our driving and traffic problems, and you get some people think that, you know, don't you have better things to do than make traffic stops? Just this afternoon, made a traffic stop, not me, one of the guys made a traffic stop for speeding, and turned out, person was wanted for murder out of California. So we get a lot more than just-
Way to go.
...traffic stops and fines and violations. So we get drugs, we get warrants, we get all kinds of things, so that was a good one. And lastly, with Patriot Day tomorrow, we get a lot of support and encouragement, and we thank you very much. Eighteen years ago, I was undercover in our cocks at the time, had long curly hair past my shoulder, and I'm sure everybody in here can say the same thing. Yeah, hard to believe, I know, now, but I still remember every single part of that day like, like it happened yesterday, and I'm sure all of you can say the same thing. So thank you for the support, appreciate it.
And Chief, where will you be tomorrow?
I will be in Lansing for Patriot Day. I was invited for a ceremony there, and I feel very honored.
Yeah, Representative Robert Wittenberg has invited Chief Buchholz to be a guest of the Michigan House of Representatives tomorrow and be on the floor of the House when they do their ceremony commemorating 9/11. So congratulations, Chief, for this honor.
Thank you.
Hey, tell your officers, great job, good catch on this felon, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
That's from every one of us.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Tom Jones, how are you?
Real good. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
VPW Director.
Just a little update on Nine Mile. They are shooting for start pouring curbs in sidewalks. I know it's a little tough right now with the high school, and the schools kind of being disrupted, timing is, you know, what it is. But looking, looking at rain this week, so that might get pushed off a little bit, but looking forward to seeing those sidewalks going back in. There'll be new ADA ramps all the way up and down Nine Mile, so it's a good thing. Ed already talked about the North John R project, so we sat down and talked about it, and just keeping it just out of Woodward Heights to Ten Mile makes a lot more sense than trying to disrupt our entire center of our city. So next year, we'll continue on all the way down to the Service Drive, and it'll be restripped at that time with the bike lanes and the road diet. So it'll be, everything will be a nice fresh, fresh start for next year, and then, of course, the I-75 projects will kick in, and hopefully our projects will be wrapped up prior to that.
Yeah, they're already chopping trees down on 75.
They're doing a lot of legwork, a lot of things are going on before the actual project gets into, into swing.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our Water Department Supervisor, come on.
Good evening. I'm gonna approach the table with showing town. So, this product you see here, this was performed by Avner Tech, that is the liner that was put into every catch basin and manhole all up and down the new John R project where blacktop was used. What tends to happen is the mortar joints of the vibrations of the road will start to crumble, and then you'll start to see those divots in the road. We wanted to avoid all the hard work on that road, so we've stabilized every one of the manholes that is in the road there for everybody.
Yeah, I saw it after this week, last week, spraying them.
Yeah, so it's a unique product. It is environmentally friendly. We made sure that was in the specs because we do hold a stormwater permit, and some of those catch basins do enter the stormwater system, and others go combined. We will look into the issue with the sewer tomorrow. We'll take a look at that and see what's going on. We've made new strides with the demos. We've worked diligently with the Building Department to correct those issues for the future. We've had so many new builds go on and teardowns that it's time to wake everybody up a little bit on what needs to be done there, so.
Tim, I appreciate it, and, and you guys have done a great job. The departments have done a great job. Sometimes they fall through the cracks, and this was done in the wintertime, so it may have been an issue with weather and snow on the ground, but it, it's an environmental concern, and I appreciate you guys staying on top of this.
And that basin you, you asked about also in your neighborhood, that, we did repair that, we're just letting it cure.
Yeah, Sue spotted that, and she said, I don't think I can patch this one.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Any other department heads? Does Serene disappear? Do you have anything else you want to add from the Rec Department?
She was effectively hiding behind Jesse's head.
I saw that. So the Attorney have any comments this evening?
No, sir, thank you.
City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, as you opened with, this, tomorrow is Patriots' Day. Tomorrow is the anniversary of 9/11, 2001. We all remember where we were that day. I was Assistant City Manager, and I was holding the staff meeting as my predecessor was in court on a personal matter, and there was a knock on the door from a staffer from the City Clerk's office saying, I have a message from your wife. She insisted I interrupt the staff meeting and give you this message. And the message was very simply, and I still have it, it says terrorists have attacked the World Trade Center. So immediately what we did was we flipped on the TV, and we watched, the buildings were still standing at that point in time, and unfortunately, as the morning went on, we learned of an attack on the Pentagon, we learned of the flight in Pennsylvania that the passengers bravely brought down to avoid further carnage, and we also unfortunately watched those buildings collapse and fall to the street. I was very proud of how quick Hazel Park came together. My fire chief at the time, Ray DeWalt, he made sure that our department was ready, all the packs were charged, everybody was ready to go just in case anything happened in the metro Detroit area. Police Department, same thing, then Chief Niedermeyer, he and I scheduled a meeting with the schools. We sat down, had like a grand staff meeting with all of the department heads and the school officials as well, and we made sure that we were prepared for anything that would happen in the metro Detroit area. I was very pleased with how well the people of Hazel Park came together in the aftermath of that tragedy. I saw someone posted a meme today on the internet, and they said, it was, it was, it was kind of a meme in memory of September 12th, how well we came together as a country, and what an amazing display of patriotism and unity that we had then. And I hope that we take this occasion while we remember those who've lost their lives in the terrible tragedy, we take this as an opportunity to remember that sense of unity. In a country that has become increasingly polarized and divided, we need to concentrate on the things that unite us, and we need to come together in a spirit of compromise and find the common ground to heal our country's divisions and to solve our problems. There's no country on this planet like the United States of America. There's no country that's done the things that we've done, that's accomplished what we've accomplished. Well, we are not a perfect country. The arc is bending towards ever improving greatness for this country, and we need to remember that, and we need to remember that we are the stewards of that legacy. So I ask that everybody remember September 11th, but I also ask that everybody remember September 12th, because that was a day of extraordinary unity and a sense of purpose in this country, and we need to find that sense of purpose again. Even as we harbor, as we labor on here, pardon me, in Hazel Park, under a system of municipal finance that is fundamentally broken, we continue to do great things, and I hope this country will come together and continue to do great things as well. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Holland.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. A lot of children in 2001 are currently wearing our nation's uniform and fighting in the same theater. I hope there comes a day when we don't have to send our children to fight wars. That said, one of our own, John W. Deering, was killed on November 21st, 2005 by an IED in Operation Iraqi Freedom. So a child from our community gave his life to protect us, and I don't for a minute not have gratitude for the men and women who wear our uni, our nation's uniform, and also those who support them on the home front. They are the gatekeepers, and they are the things that stop the things that go bump in the night. I'm very grateful for them. On a much, much lighter note, one of my neighbors, who is what I would call an outstanding landlord, was by yesterday, and he was so excited to stop by and tell me how excited he was about the new John R road diet on the south end, that he blocked my neighbor's driveway. He, he was just really thrilled. He's got five properties in the city, and all of them have great people in them. The one directly behind me is just amazing, and he had a cleanup crew there today doing work, but Tony and Kate, I just want to say thank you for being an example of what a good landlord is and sharing your excitement with the John R road diet. He hadn't been down here in a minute, and he thought it was great, plus he missed all the construction. Thank you again, Tim. I appreciate that you guys are on the house and the sinkhole that's been corrected. I guess finally, I have an exciting event happening for me this weekend that I'd like to share with everyone, and there's a few people that know, but this is for everybody. I'm going to get to see the first pictures of my first grandchild. So I'm gonna be a grandma. Don't know, don't, well, don't know a whole lot yet, but it's, it's frightening and exciting all at the same time. So thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you, all the city employees for doing the job, Chief. Darn, man, that's, what a great catch. Please tell that officer that he's got my nomination for Officer of the Year, and then the staff that backed him up. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and remember tomorrow to say a silent prayer for those that are still in harm's way and keeping us safe. Thank you.
Councilwoman Solomon.
It's a pretty packed house in here tonight. It's nice to see a bunch of faces participating in city government, so thank you all for coming. I want to kind of echo the sentiments of September 11th, and I believe everybody has their own individual experience. It's definitely a situation, I will never forget where I was, how I felt. I had a friend at the time who was a pilot, and it took me almost 24 hours to locate him after that, which was really unnerving. But, you know, don't forget to thank, every day, thank your police and fire for keeping you safe. I owe a debt of gratitude to our city here. Our police and our fire department have a special place in my heart, especially, a special place in my heart for their consideration during my tragedy this past year. So just keep in mind that they're out there doing the work that a lot of people don't want to do, and be grateful for that. So thank you guys for your service always.
Councilwoman LaCarrel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and not much more that can be said about 9/11, except I wish my sister-in-law happy birthday. How about that? Sorry, that's kind of, there's people with that birthday, and, so. Watch out for the bicyclists, and the kids shouldn't be walking in the street. Invite everybody out to the Wednesday night, 7:00 behind the high school, the Hazel Park Casual Biking Club. It's a nice, fun, short ride, 12 miles or something like that. Real casual, really. I mean, it's an hour and a half or something. And in the immortal words of Tom Solman, if you have children, hug them and tell them you love them, and if you love somebody, tell them you love them every day. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
So I, I guess, kind of being towards the end of this string of comments, I guess I'd like to just echo what everybody else has said. It's true, we'll never forget where I was on September 11th. I was a sophomore in college. It was a very interesting day. I always think I was in chemistry class, and the professor kept yelling at everybody because we were all talking about what was going on, till somebody finally clued him in, and next to me, new campus was evacuated. So it's, it's a very interesting experience from my youth. So definitely appreciate all of our first responders out there at every level, not just from 9/11, but every day that go out and put themselves at risk. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. And again, remember all those that have lost their lives, all the friends, families, the fire, fires, the police officers, medical teams, everyone that helped that had loved ones in those buildings on 9/11. And we all have memories of how, where we were, and it seemed like a day of slow motion, I think, for everybody. We were all just kind of like in shock. As to how can, we never thought anyone would attack the United States on its own ground after Pearl Harbor. We never saw that. And as big a country as we are, we stretch many ways across this world. We help other countries, we dedicate our time, our resources to world events, disasters, such as the hurricanes, to other countries like the Bahamas, Cuba. I mean, we, even if we're not an ally or an ally to another country, we tend to be the country of support for the world. And I think that's what kind of made us all think, how could someone attack us? Why would they attack us? And it put things in perspective, I believe, in 2001 for everyone, how and why, and made us say, hey, it's time for us to get back on track and protect ourselves and make our country, make, tell the other countries, hey, we're here, and we're not gonna take it, and we're gonna move on and feel free and proud and not be scared of terrorism. And I believe our country has rebuilt and rebounded ourselves in, in a short time, in over the 18 years, even though we still fight terrorism throughout the world. I believe that we all have the wherewithal within us to build that firm stature to say no to that kind of stuff.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, build on what you said there so well. Hazel Park always stood up and supported our troops tremendously. My stepson enlisted right at, you know, he enlisted right after 9/11.
A lot of parties I knew did.
You know, he served in combat in Iraq, and, well, he was over there. Hazel Park, I announced one time that his unit was looking for donations of candy, and what we ended up with, I mean, Diane and I shipped it all over there, but his unit probably had candy for six months after that. So Hazel Park really came through. I'll never forget that tremendous outpouring of generosity from the city for him and for his unit when he was in combat over in Iraq, and it just speaks, just speaks volumes about what a wonderful community Hazel Park is.
And that's where I was going, is how good our community has been over the years and how great we've done special events and camaraderie back and forth, whether we sit on one side of a opposing theory or thought or, or something, we all do come together to support our community, and that's what it's about. We need to stick to that and always stick to that. Thank you. We're going to the exec session today?
Uh, not tonight, but you will be needing an exec session to deal with, to update you on a litigation issue probably next week in our study session. I've got meetings with the attorneys on Thursday.
And, and, you know, I do want to bring one more thing up. The road diet, bear with us, 75 is causing a lot of havoc with all the side roads, all the orange barrels. It is a back, it gets backed up at 3:00 going northbound, a half a mile back from Nine Mile. And, and Nine Mile itself is kind of rough to get across during the day, so be patient. I hear a lot of horns beeping, a lot of people getting aggravated, driving around cars. Be patient, don't get in a hurry. I'm gonna say it again and again, but be happy that the roads are getting fixed. That's the big issue here. And we're doing it in short stints, it's taking about two months per area that we're covering, and I think that's the best we can do. And also, patronize your local businesses during the construction time. They are struggling. They are struggling. I got two calls today from a couple of businesses on Nine Mile. They said they're making it, but they're struggling, and, you know, I don't care if you go in and buy a bottle of pop, but buy a pot of pop or something, buy a bag of chips, something, candy bar, put your gas in, whatever. It don't take much, you know, they're making thirty, fifty cents, a hundred dollar on the item, that helps them over the long haul, over the weeks, and I think that's what we gotta stick to, you know, help out these small companies, small businesses that are trying to hang in there. During the construction, we all, even without the construction, we're, we all struggle some days to make our bills, but let's just stick together on this, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Any dissension to go on home? Okay, thank you.